All right, I will call the May twenty second, two thousand twenty-three. Meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order. I will note that the board did meet in an executive session at six P M. Where we discussed two litigation matters, one related to the Paper Mill Road case disposition and settlement offer. Another one with a potential enforcement action related to a sign ordinance violation. We also discussed a personnel matter related to a potential police department resignation. I want to apologize that we're running a little bit late and I appreciate your understanding. With that being said, I'll ask Mr. Sharitz to please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Supervisor Alteri.
Here.
Supervisor Roberts Lightcap.
Here.
Supervisor Partridge.
Here.
Supervisor Russo. You know, he is. He is online. Supervisor Chanless.
Here.
Hey, Mike, can you?
He has to be able to be heard and hear, so we have to confirm that.
We'll confirm that, okay.
I'm here. I'm here.
Perfect.
So just you're consistent with our remote participation policy. And consistent with Pennsylvania law, as long as board members can hear and be heard and participate in the proceedings, they can be remote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Solister. With that being said, we'll now move down to the moment of silence. And we will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
United States of America. Stands one nation. Liberty, justice for all.
Move down to item five, the agenda. I do have one addition to the agenda. Sixteen point one, I would like to add an agenda item. Under, um, for discussion, it'll be labeled as public comment, discussion, and possible motion regarding written public comment. Outside of that, I see other, no other additions or subtractions to the agenda. I will ask for a motion.
So, so moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap to approve the agenda as amended. I added sixteen point one. Now, I'm just gonna jump to that. Um. To approve, so the motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to section six, public comment for agenda items only. If there's any members of the public who have any agenda, who have any public comment on an agenda item, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I will note that we did receive public comment from a Ms. Patty Wilson at forty-one eleven Battles Lane. Um, with regards to two zoning hearing board decisions. Um, and yeah, two zoning hearing board decisions, as well as her opposition to the Mainline Health trailer that's on the agenda tonight. Let the record reflect that there's no other individuals in the audience who are here to provide public comment. We'll now move down to the minutes seven point one. Oh, sorry, ma'am. If you just want us to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Sorry about that, I didn't see your hand.
Hi, my name is Sandy Flying. I was, I have a home at thirty-five twenty-one Horton Road. I'm a new resident, so I'm sorry I missed that coda.
No, you're good. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any public comment?
Oh, I do, but I was instructed by some others that I should do it at the end.
Who were you instructed by?
Oh, I'm sorry, just asked my, somebody sitting in the room.
Okay, is it, is it, is it on an agenda item?
Um, I thought I understood it to be under public comment, um, under item seventeen.
Okay, so it's not agenda item?
Uh, not that you know of yet.
Okay, perfect, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. And you're good.
It is a little confusing. Got it. I'm sorry. That's a fine.
No, you're perfectly fine. I like how you answered that, that was good. So I'll get my pencil sharpened for that one. Um. Thank you very much. And again, welcome to the township. We'll now move down to the minutes seven point one. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the May eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting?
So moved.
So, motion was made by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. I will just go a little bit out of order now that we got that done. Um. Public hearing thirteen point one. Uh, because we have the stenographer here. Um, I will note thirteen point one, which is phase two land development and conditional use hearing for Iran McGough Club. This hearing is going to be continued. Your support, do I need to open up the hearing and hold the hearing, or do I just say that it's, it's being closed? Okay, so I'll make a motion to open the hearing for the phase two land development and conditional use hearing for Iran McGough Club.
Second.
Uh, motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously to open the hearing. I will state, as I just did prior to the stenographer starting to report, that this agenda item has been continued. I don't believe there's any public comment on that. And we're granting the continuance. I didn't have that date, so it was June ten?
Yeah, so, so anybody who may be here or who is interested in the aroundment conditional use hearing. It is moved by request of the applicant. F twenty-two-three, that's our best estimate of when they will be ready. Uh, they're still trying to work for an engineering issue related to stormwater. Uh, hopefully they'll be ready by then, and it may have to be continued another time. June ten is a seventy-seven. Uh, I'm sorry, June, I'm glad you said it, June twelve, June twelve.
So in case anyone didn't hear that from the, uh, who's watching this live. I don't know if this solicitor's microphone was on, but this is going to be continued until June twelve, two thousand twenty-three. I will make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion is made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. You're welcome. No problem. Now we'll move down to the resolutions of recognition. Eight point one. Consider approving resolution two thousand twenty-three dash sixteen, national.
There's a reason I made the tenth.
All right, so let me open up the hearing again.
We have to open, I'm sorry.
Tell me when you're ready, Tom.
I said June, you said it. Well, I sound so far away. I said June, it's July ten. Yeah, that's why, that's why I said the tenth. Yeah, thanks, Tom, you're the best. Take, take out all my curse words and change my mistake. So can, can we open that back up, Mr. Chair? We don't need a motion, just so you can open it back.
You're ready, Tom?
Yeah.
All right, so I will open up that hearing for the phase two land development and conditional use hearing at Iran McGough Club.
Yeah.
I will note that the change, the date is, we're correcting the date, it is actually July.
July ten.
July ten, two thousand twenty-three, not June twelve, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and now I will close the hearing.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's actually a good one. Yeah. So for those watching, if they didn't hear that, no, I'm just kidding. Um, now we'll move down to resolutions of recognition eight point one. Can I consider, excuse me, can I get a motion? To consider approving resolution twenty-two-three dash sixteen for National Public Works Week Supervisor Partridge.
Resolution number twenty-two-three dash sixteen, the rhythm of public works, National Public Works Week, May twenty-first to twenty-seventh. Two thousand twenty-three, whereas the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, will be observed as National Public Works Week. With the theme Ready and Resilient. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals. Who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. And whereas we acknowledge public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services. Are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of the township of Newtown. Urge all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect. Our national health, safety, and quality of life. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in Newtown Township to gain knowledge of. And to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works. And public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year two thousand twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore be it resolved that the town, Newtown Township Board of Supervisors hereby join the nation in honoring and celebrating the achievements of the public works departments. During National Public Works Week held May twenty-first to twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, adopted this twenty-second day of May, two thousand twenty-three, and that's my motion.
Thank you very much Supervisor Partridge. Is there a second?
So moved.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion? I think that I would just, uh, say what I think the whole board is feeling is, uh, we've always said, which is the truth, and it's very fitting that you're sitting in the manager's chair today. Uh, that the public works team is the hardest working group that we have here in the police department, I mean, the police. The hardest working group that we have here in the township. The Public Works Department is on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, they are the face of the township, just as much as the police department is. Um, George, I think that, you know, we always, uh, like to remind you to tell your team how appreciative we are as a board, and more importantly, as a community. And there's an issue, you guys are there. When there's an event, you guys are there, and the things need to be solved, you guys are there, so I appreciate everything, this board appreciates everything that you all do. I mean, we thank you, and, and we're very excited for this resolution.
Great, thank you very much.
No problem. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to section eight point two. Consider approving resolution two thousand twenty-three dash seventeen, recognizing the Eagle Scout achievement of Noah Sharitz. And it'll be read by Eagle Scout Mother Supervisor Roberts Lightcap.
Like to make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three dash seventeen, recognizing Noah Sharitz on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America have a proud history of service in the community of Newtown Township dating back over a hundred years. And whereas the mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare, prepare young people to make ethical. And moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of duty to God and country. To help other people at all times, to help to keep physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. And to be trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. And whereas Newtown Township recognizes and congratulates Noah Francis Sharitz of, a member of the Boy Scouts of America Troop Three Fifteen. On his achievement of Eagle Scout, the highest honor bestowed by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Noah has dedicated countless hours of service to the community with the Boy Scouts through various projects, including among others, food calculate. Collections for those in need, improvements to our parks and trails, and care of our historic sites. And whereas Noah earned a total of fifty-one merit badges, which is thirty more merit badges than the required twenty-one. And identifying his Eagle Scout insignia with the two silver palms. And whereas Noah is by his fam, known by his family, teachers, and his friends. Who include his fellow scouts, who have taken the principles of the scout oath, the scout law, and traits of the Eagle Scout to heart, and exhibits them in how he conducts. Himself and how he leads others by example. And therefore be resolved. Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township commends Noah Sharitz and his parents. And his troop, and his leaders. Uh, and directs a copy of this resolution to be provided to him on the occasion of his Eagles Court, Eagle Scout Court of Honor. Celebrated on Sunday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-three, at Saint Anastasia Catholic Church. Adopted this twenty-second day of May, two thousand twenty-three, and that's my motion.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Uh, just so it doesn't look like we're, um. Not recognizing Mr. Sharitz Junior, but obviously we'll have more to say, uh, to him. Uh, at his Eagle Scout Court of Honor, but congratulations to you and to, to, to Mrs. Sharitz.
And just as a, aside, the having two palms and all the additional merit badges, that's a, that's a. Eagle Scout is a huge accomplishment, but that he went over and above, uh, the merit badges is, is pretty, is pretty impressive. So you should be very proud, you guys did a great job.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to presentations, nine point one, Stormwater Presentation by Mr. Ed Napples from the Finance Committee.
Good evening, Ed Napples, ninety-two Roberts Road. It's on. Great. Uh, appreciate your, uh, giving us space on the agenda. Um, the members of the Finance Committee, we have, uh, two members here today, Lisa Pascal, Alex Sukus. Um. This is a project that we started about eighteen months ago. Starting to investigate. Financial information related to the ongoing issue of. Mediating. And addressing where needed stormwater. Uh, and we've evolved. As this thing has progressed from. Directionally, rather than trying to give. A recommendation, but more to serve really in an advisory role for the Board of Supervisors. So we've kind of changed our focus more towards, we want to, we want to give you the information that you need. In order to be able to move forward and address how you choose along with township input, uh, in going forward. Next slide. We have the problem. We, we're in the midst of, we had a drought last year, we're in the midst of a drought now, so folks may be saying, what, what's the issue? But the issue is, next time we have a five-inch rain, we're gonna, we're gonna know about it. Increasing frequency in the severity of storms, I think that's the one really that's been talked about widely around the country in terms of. Fort Lauderdale having twenty inches of rain. That doesn't happen. Next slide. We've charted out for purposes, it's a presentation in terms of. Where the problems have been identified. Uh, to date. Um, and you can see it's fairly widespread throughout the township.
And Ed, just, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but before they go off that slide, just to explain to those who are in the audience and then those who are watching. That is a, that is, we're wrong, but those are the maps that show you the drainage systems in the different neighborhoods, correct?
Yes.
And what we're seeing here, if I'm looking at it correctly, are two older neighborhoods that have. Um, most likely probably low-point conveyance systems prior to Act one sixty-seven and the best practice man, you know, B and P's coming into place. Meaning there's not a lot of road segment with, 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 excuse me, not a lot of road segments with inlets and a system in place, correct?
Inadequately.
Got it. And these are the existing neighborhoods that again were, were built prior to when that act would have been enacted, so it's kind of playing catch-up with, with the law.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Next slide. Obviously work being performed, um, work is ongoing. Uh, but the problem still, still seems to be growing rather than, um. Resolving, and so it's, um, an ongoing effort, public works, township engineer. Next slide. This is where, um, I think last, we were aware that there was any type of financial information that was presented. This was dated back in November of, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Where the key projects were identified of, of, of serious concern. Some of the projects were just monies set aside for study. Uh, others were mediation estimates that were put together at that point in time. I'll ask a very simple question at this point. Is this eight point five million, is this fair? Is this low? Is this high? I mean, should we be even talking about it? Is the problem resolved, or is it still continuing to? Grow? So I would, I realize I put the engineer on, on the line a little bit here. But. From your perspective at this point. Is eight point five million still a good target as of this point, or is, is the number much bigger? Or smaller? And I'm sorry, I'm putting the engineer on, on, um, without, give me an advance warning.
Uh, but I would say that I know a lot of the study was done before I actually even started with the township.
I apologize, that's correct.
Uh.
Engineer.
But, uh, I'm gonna speculate that it is not an understatement in the cost of it needed. Um. But, it's, is that eight million is the exact number I, I'm not.
Okay, yeah, no, I.
I mean, it's not a, a substantial amount of money, uh, because any of that type of work is very expensive.
Right. Okay. We have additional projects that were identified at that point in time, there's approximately twenty-one of them. Um, we didn't want to list them all out. What we, the other number that we don't even know is, I mean, how much do we spend right now in terms of maintenance on an ongoing basis as compared to instruction mediation? So we got, we have a lot of data, but we have some key data points that are missing. And so hard to identify a solution. And you don't know the total scope, so. This obviously, I think, is something that supervisors may want to think about. Going back and addressing to get more empirical data. Next slide. Our, our, um, Finance Committee. And Subcommittee worked on a variety of different thoughts around. Funding. How do we, how do we come up with funding? Um, special tax, a hybrid. Did it be funded with a bond? Could it be a fee as compared to a tax? We have approximately sixty-six tax-exempt properties in the township. And I believe the number, uh, for. The taxable parcels. Fifty-six-hundred-and-sixty taxable parcels. We have a slight variance there, but some of the, obviously, some of the exempt, uh, tax-exempt parcels are significant parcels. With a significant amount of impervious coverage. Hence, zaspray in the stormwater. Um, I know grant money has been pursued. Um, the township, find, uh, township manager Steve Neese. Is actively looking at. Where grants could be secured, but obviously in the environment that we're in. Unlikely that we would be able to have a windfall that could, would help us through this problem. Right now, I believe the, um. ARPA money that was received in two thousand twenty-one, million five, approximately a million five. There's about a million dollars left in that account as we sit here today. So that money obviously has been used and being deployed. Um. As best we, as best we can, with judiciously as we can, but that's gonna run out. And so we're now thinking in terms of where does the Board of Supervisors. Wish to look. Going forward in terms of where funding will come from. Should it be in the general budget, should it be separate? Should it be within the township, should it be a mission of authority? All, all the complex questions.
And I guess, right, again, just to give everyone a holistic picture, the reason why we're talking about the ARPA. Is because the one point four, one point five that we got from that, the board, and correct me if I'm wrong here. No, I'm not, but, uh, the board allocated that all towards the stormwater. You know, figuring out our stormwater problem we have here in the township, correct? Correct.
We also identified, uh, some surrounding municipalities, um, and what, what they have done, they've moved forward on this. Maybe what I'm doing is Alex, if you're good. You want to come up, you want to talk about the, um, other municipalities?
Really, a little quick, is just. There's a whole, uh, just like. There's a whole lot of, uh, different ways to handle this in Radnor, that's the next slide, you know, they have a, they have a piece. Set up, um, and it's online, and they just, um, you know, depends on your square lot, or your, your footage. Of your lot, um, there doesn't seem to be any offsets, for instance, if you have a stormwater management system in place. Um, it's just a, a straight-up flat fee. Um. Another one is Westchester. Um. Um, they set up a stormwater charge, and this, this is in the courts, um. Because Westchester University objected, uh, to paying the, um, fee. They said it really is a tax, and court initially ruled in January, I guess it was, and said, yes, it is a tax, you shouldn't have been paying. Uh, or, or Westchester University didn't need to pay. And over the last three years, in fact, they had refused to pay, which is why Westchester took them to court. And, um, I was just told by the solicitor today that the. Appeal of that is moving along very slowly in the first brief, the appeals brief isn't even due to be filed till July. So, you know, that case looms out there, yeah, I mean, it's in conflict with the way a lot of municipalities are charging right now. Um, so, you know, I'm not sure, you know, how that's gonna work out, but we can't afford, of course, to just sit back and not do anything while the court. Um, resolves, you know, the issue. Um, we started down this path. Or the, their Subcommittee that, that's handling, and started down the path originally saying, we'll just do a fee, we hit all the properties exactly under the reasoning that was in. This court case, and then in the middle of their research, this court case hit, so that's sort of a little, a bump. Um. And then I put Rahobat Beach in here, is the next slide. Um. Cause they set up a whole, they, they did a billing units thing as well, but what was interesting about this, the way they did it, is they set up a whole task force. To deal just with, uh, stormwater. Um, they, they set up, it had a lot of stakeholders involved, and, you know, they finally, uh, they haven't resolved it yet. Um. But that's how they proceeded, and so, you know, all these townships are dealing with it, it isn't just, obviously, a small subsection, and. And Ed and Lisa met with like Middletown Township and, and others around here. Uh, you know, and, and everyone has different ways of doing it, but we put these in, these three examples in simply because of the, um. Show you the different ways that people are, are handling this. In the next slide, we'll talk about what the actual cost would be.
Yeah, the, the complexity. Whether or not you're gonna have a situation where either if you're using a tax or a fee. You have to address or give economic recognition to, uh, property owners who have put in some types of systems. You have to identify the amount of impervious coverage. That one particular parcel may have as compared to neighboring parcels. The, the data points on this become quite complex. Um, we've been told that in, in the case of Radnor, they did. Theirs is in ten years. It took them three years and almost seven figures. In terms of what they expended to get to the point of implementation. On, on their particular structure, so that. But they're, they're down to each parcel, impervious coverage on each parcel. That, that granular. Next slide. Again. This is for supervisors to consider. Come back to us with, come back to the Finance Committee in terms of more information, we'd like to have you look at this, we'd like you to have you look at that. We're looking for input from you in that regard. Um, the other thing that we were advised, but all municipalities we talked to, they all emphasized an advisory board, citizens advisory board. They said the, because of the significance of the issue and the cost. Public communication piece was critical. They said, do not bypass that. And again, Finance Committee role, um, we're, we're looking for at this point in time. As the supervisors digest this information directionally, where we can. One of the things we did identify when Rich Lefog is here. Um, Rich was able to secure data from the, uh, county. On a per parcel basis. Um, the, it's no surprise, the taxable parcels, the data was pretty good in terms of square footage, things like that. The exempt properties. The exempt properties, very poor. The data was clearly not right. So we have a lot of work to do if we're going to have to go across and look at some type of an implementation that will cross all parcels. Similarly, we don't have impervious coverage data. So if if that has to be factored into the formulas to how we're going to proceed with this, that's going to be an expensive undertaking. Any questions initially to the supervisors?
I have two questions. The first one is, how are, and I don't know if this is to you or to Alex. Well, the first thing I will say is, I would also advise you to look at Turdiferen. Turdiferen set up a pretty substantial stormwater advisory committee. They went through a very lengthy process. They actually incorporated like GIS with regards to the problem areas of the community. So that's like a good model for what you're mentioning when this eventually gets off the ground for an advisory body to look at. But in those other municipalities that you looked at, how do they handle an understanding that we have the Westchester University, Westchester Borough litigation pending before the Supreme Court right now? But how do those other municipalities handle tax exempt parcels? Is there, you know, like a pilot structure for some order fees? Is it that they don't pay it at all? And for those pilot payment in lieu of taxes, right, they still give a set amount based off of an agreement like do municipalities, do those other municipalities do anything with regard to that? Or do they just let it, they're tax exempt, so they don't touch them?
No, they were pursuing the fee option.
They were.
From the ones that that we encountered. So that, because of the equity issue, they they were, they were clearly heading down that path now. Where they stand today, I don't know.
Yeah. If if I may, that's the, that is the distinction between the tax and the fee.
Yeah.
You can charge the exempt. The idea is you can charge the exempt property owners a fee, even if they can't tax.
Yep.
So that's, you know, unfortunately, what the Commonwealth Court said is because the fee that you, that that Westchester Borough was charging was such a broad benefit to the Borough in general. They're saying for all intents and purposes, that's just a tax. It's not like a fee for service, like you come in for a specific service from township, whether it's a permit or whatever, we have associated costs that we offset with a fee.
Got it. And then, Ed, the other question I have is, in the beginning of the presentation, you talked about more information that you all needed as well to kind of give us more of a of a direction. And then you also say that, you know, you want information from us as well. What information do you all have outstanding? Or information that you you all are kind of looking forward to getting or receiving or still crunching for us to kind of have a more holistic picture of this?
We used twenty twenty one data as we started this last, really dug in last summer. So we're going to need to come forward twenty twenty two. And we're going to be able, we're going to need to be able to secure with confidence that some of these data points that we're getting from the county are are in fact valid. So it's going to be a a whole validation process that's going to have to go through to come to, okay, this is now our starting point. We have a very, very clear picture of every parcel exempt tax in the township. I would think that would be something that we could pursue, but it will be time consuming and it will probably be expensive.
Is that the only other one?
That's, at this point, that's the one that's critical, because I believe the rest of this is going to be more legal driven in terms of is it municipal authority? Is it within the township? Those are, those are going to be primarily legal questions. And and what should it be? Should it be a tax?
Got it. And then the last question I have is just as for a clarification or or refresher. The chart that you put up that showed the value of the eight point four million dollars. Maybe this is actually a question for Eric, but Eric, of those, how many were on there? Twelve, twelve items, Ed? What was that? Steve, can you scroll up to that? Keep going. Keep going.
Walk back.
First one, right here, of those sticks.
Yeah, see, there's four in there. They're just study projections. They didn't even have a full assessment.
So four of them are just study projections. Mr. Johnson, my understanding is that we started, I think, with the culverts, correct? We started knocking some of these off already.
The Echo Valley Culver project was completed last, just as I saw in the fall, yes.
I think we started north, Northwood. I believe we started Northwood. Or there, or there's some, there was some work done on Northwood, George?
So I I believe the the former township engineer had started some of the planning work on it. The, you know, the shovels didn't hit the ground on it, but I know they were in the process of the planning. I would have to see where, what the status of that evaluation was, because right around when they started that, there was the change.
Okay, if you could just follow up on that.
Absolutely.
But regardless, I mean, we still have a lot to, to do with regards to media priority. So, all right. Those are all the questions that I have, Ed. I appreciate it. Anyone else from the board? Kathy or Mike online? Do either of you have anything, any questions for Ed or the finance committee?
No.
Not right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Alex. And thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. All right, we'll now move down to report section ten, ten point one, report from the police department chief. Do you have anything to add or supplement from your report? Ten point two, report from the fire department chief Everloff. Do you have anything to add or supplement? Thank you very much. Ten point three, report from the public works director, Mr. Sherritt.
So I I don't have anything to add to the official submitted report unless anybody has any questions. I do have two updates to projects and I will try to be as brief as I can with them. Ready? Okay, so the Bartram Bridge, eighteen sixty Bartram Bridge Rehabilitation Project, the structural work. The plans and the drawings are are getting near completion and soon to be ready to be shared with you for review. Newtown and Willistown Township have been working on them for the last couple of years, really since CMC Engineering was brought in by the Bartram Bridge Joint Commission and the townships agreed to have them do the the plan preparation. And after that, the townships budgeted for the project to be done. Newtown Township got a historic preservation grant to to continue it. So the two public works departments have, at this point, reviewed the plans and the and the bid specs. It's about a hundred page document. The the Bartram Bridge Joint Commission has also done that. We've sent our comments back. They're reviewing them. As soon as we get them, we ask permission to give them to the township solicitor as well as Willistown Solicitor to to look through it. It's not a document that we would normally use. So, you know, we'd like your your input on it. Then we could get them to the board and and ask for permission to advertise. So we are getting pretty close to it.
Perfect. I actually saw Eddie, Eddie Johnson on Sunday, I guess it was or Saturday, he was riding around in the neighborhood and he was telling me how much progress the the committee has made. And I believe their meeting is tomorrow, right? The outdoor one?
It is. Yeah. So tomorrow evening at the, at the Bartram Bridge. And I I know Ed is is thrilled because he sees documents and he sees drawings.
He's very excited.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So the the second one, and Steve, if you could put the map up for this one, this is the road assessment report. Yeah. So the second update is regarding the road assessment survey that was done by the township engineer utilizing the robotics program. And and Eric, you know, if I make any, you know, incorrect statements on how it works, please feel free to correct me, but essentially it provides a objective scan of the road system by driving around and the data is then compiled into a condition report. I want to give a quick overview of the results of it, primarily because it does affect some of your thoughts with regards to items later on the agenda. And we are going to continue to sift through the data and 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 really dig down into it, but for the time being, suffice to say that the the report shows that the reports that we've had and our observations and and staff assessments seem to be on track as to, you know, as to as to the road conditions. There's a lot of facts and figures. I'll try to be quick with them. Newtown Township has a road system that's about fifty two miles. We've got an additional fifteen point seven, eight miles of state roads, which we're not responsible for, and then miles and miles of private roads. But fifty two point eight eight miles of township road that we take care of. Between twenty thirteen and twenty eighteen, over thirteen miles of township roadway were resurfaced. And then in twenty twenty, another eleven point eight five miles were resurfaced. Even though we're still repaying the loan from the twenty twenty project, we've done smaller work in-house with our in-house equipment. And last year, we repaved another half mile by partnering with Marple Township on a project that they were doing. And it was a road that was shared with with Marvel. Later on the agenda, you're going to see the township's recommendation for another three point seven miles of of road resurfacing this year. If we do that, that would mean that over one half of the road system in Newtown would have been repaved within the last ten years. The map that's shown on the agenda and up on the screen highlights the road conditions that were found when Panoni did the drive around back last month. There's two shades of green, which show the top two conditions. The yellow is for identifying areas of distress, which are level three, followed by orange and red for worsening condition. Ten years ago, when we started road resurfacing work again, we started in the most distressed areas. And you could see the green that's up on the screen now identifies that work that was done during those last ten years. The areas that we're going to be presenting later are two neighborhoods that have roads that have significant distress. The plan gives focus to our future plans as well. We're aware of the need to address Sawmill Road and Earl's Lane in particular. Those have areas of of some of the greatest distress. We're also very mindful of the Newtown Heights section of town. However, we know that Aqua is about to do significant infrastructure work in that area. So we are monitoring that work very closely and know that it's going to have a positive effect on the road conditions there. I did try to discuss that project with Aqua and get some updates for you for this meeting. Unfortunately, the person I wanted to talk to wasn't available, so I will follow up with them and I'll report back on what the the Heights project is. Other areas like Upper and Lower St. Albans and Spring to Point Estates, among others, have significant level three and four condition roads, so they're going to be prioritized as well. Bottom line, the objective evaluation the township engineer performed was helpful in confirming our thoughts where work should focus, and it's going to help us to make recommendations going forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a not so much question, but a couple of comments. One, I think what's key is what you just said at the end of that, the objective analysis of the township engineer. These past few boards over, you know, the last ten years, as you said, that is what has been guiding this board when it comes to road programs. The old mantra of of, you know, zero percent tax increases and no investment in our infrastructure, thankfully, is kind of out the window while still being fiscally conservative and and also being able to invest in, like I said, our infrastructure to provide the the quality of roads that our residents deserve. I think that George is being a little modest when he talks about the Newtown Heights project. Obviously, I myself live in Newtown Heights. I had Aqua contact me for the easements to do the work they want to do. I never once let on that I was a supervisor. And in the course of the conversation of negotiating, because of course I had to change that, I didn't like some of the language as being a zoning attorney. They told me that George and the township were pretty much instrumental in the fact that every road that touches, it's getting touched by that program. You know, our ordinance says only to the center line, and they're going to be doing the whole thing. They're going to be doing the whole road width because of what George and Steve have been able to 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 work out in the park. So it's a huge win for for those residents. It's a huge win for the community. The other thing too is because I just think it's important to note, because I found this extremely interesting when I looked at the data. And Eric's is probably more of a question or just an explanation from you, is that this sensor that went around, this isn't just us looking at or your engineers looking at it with your eyes. It was actually a machine sensor, and it was so sensitive that there were a couple of sections of township roads that we knew were brand new, but still showed that work needed to be done. And when you looked at the data or the photos, you saw that there was just a landscaper might have dumped mulch there. Or there was something that was obstructing the road, like that's how sensitive is the sensor.
Correct. It's a, you know, this is a way that we're able to look at fifty two miles of road and holistic and pattern, but it's still ultimately a tool. And what the great thing with this is it actually gives us a data point every ten feet along the road, and it gives us that image. So there's a few places where he went. That's odd. Why is that, you know, why does it seem like it's a worse condition than we know it is? And we look at that image, it was, there was actually a staining on the road from a truck that dropped oil or something, and we're able to key in and and use this as a tool.
Awesome. And George, so fifty two miles of roadway in the township, we've done twenty seven so far in the last seven years?
Really, I mean, you know, it it would be ten years total if we included the one that we were looking to do now.
And now we're looking at an additional three point seven miles? Perfect. I have no other questions for George. Does anyone have any questions for George?
I just wanted to point out that that was part of the the capital that we have set aside because we had the road program so that it was planning, that the monies were set aside specifically for for this, because that's what everybody cares about, right? Your roads and keeping your family safe. That's what everyone, it's our top priorities. So thank you, guys. We appreciate that.
Just, just one comment, which, you know, looking at the the road program and, you know, we've done obviously a significant amount of work over over the past years that it hasn't, you know, worked it maybe put off in prior years. But still a significant amount of work ahead of us as far as the roads. And also the the previous topic, looking at the stormwater management, eight point five of immediate need. Number twenty million. I don't know how far that takes us. When you look at these things, I mean, they're they're pretty big numbers, but when you look at the, one thing about the the zero percent tax increase. When we have these conversations, honestly, I don't think we should talk about tax increases because, look, you know, there's revenue and expenses. And and somewhere there needs to be a balance. And and if there's not a balance, then then we may need to increase taxes, but we need to look at ways of getting this done that are efficient. And, you know, maybe it's spreading the cost. Maybe it's taking a bond over ten or twenty years to do some some capital improvements or or so forth. But but we need to to win this and not look at you know, tax increases. We need to look at, you know, efficient ways. And then the outcome, you know, could could be an increase in taxes, but maybe it's not. So just just some caution there to to, you know, we have some big numbers and we need to do what's being done now. Look at, you know, effective ways at at dealing with these. They're not going to go, right? You need to fix the roads. We're always going to need to fix the roads. We need to address the word. We need to do it efficiently and in in the best interest of the township, but also understand that you know, we just can't pass huge amounts of cost onto to people. You know, for instance, you know, some, some people, you need to tax them out of their homes. So you don't, you know, you don't want to do that. So. Anyway, creative solutions are what we need for these big problems. That's my comment.
Any other comments from the board? All right. So what I would like to do is we will take, we'll jump down to. Actually, we won't jump down on that because you're not going anywhere, George. Perfect. All right, seeing none, we'll move down to ten point four, report from the building slash codes officer, Mr. Rescheck. Do you have anything to add or supplement to your report?
Nothing to add.
Thank you very much. Report from the finance director, Ms. Bullock. Do you have anything to report? Thank you very much. Report from the library director, Ms. Crusoe. Do you have anything to add or supplement? Let's take that as a no. Report from the township engineer, Mr. Johnson.
Just in addition to the items that are being discussed tonight, one other item that is moving along is the the speed display signs on Gradyville and Goshen Road that we were requesting look into, the application to make and that. So we're in the process of moving that along.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll now move down to section eleven, payments, eleven point one. Paying a motion to approve the following two hundred and eighty seven dollar fifty cent escrow release payment to Paul Rogers at five oh hun, five, yeah, five hundred, five hundred First Avenue for a completed grading project. Motion is made by supervisor Partridge, seconded by supervisor Roberts. Like, Cap, is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries unanimously. Eleven point two, can I get a motion to approve the township's quarterly pension plan contribution as follows? Uniform contribution totaling fifty four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents from account number zero one four eight three fifty five five oh two point oh oh. Non-uniform contribution totaling forty six thousand two hundred and fifty nine dollars and eighty seven cents Non-uniform contribution totaling $46,022.50 from account number 0148355501.00.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 As opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section 12, bills, 12.1. I have reviewed the bills and I will make a motion to approve the bills on check register A dated May 22, 2023, totaling $841,259.87. No move or second. Motion is made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 12.2. Again, I have reviewed the bills and I will make a motion to approve the bills on check register A dated May 22, 2023, totaling $33,373.25. Is there any board discussion?
Uh, register B today.
Excuse me, register B. Is there a motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 13.1, we took care of earlier and will now move down to 14, new business. 14.1, consider waiving all township zoning application fees for the Veterans Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? Uh, Mr. Secora or Mr. uh Sharitz, but just so the public knows, this is the Veterans Hall that is being posed down at the Veterans Memorial between Astardis and um the Veterans Memorial. Is there any other additional information you want to provide? Or I think is necessary for the public.
I think it's just a meeting room, associated restrooms, they use on nonprofit veterans associations.
And this is going through zoning right now, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we're just waiving the application fee for the zoning.
Yes.
But not permit fees or anything like that. I mean.
Yeah, this is, this is just zoning application fee specific.
And that's about three, it's, how much is that 300 now?
It's, I believe, it's more like 2,000.
2,000, okay.
But this is not be, this is being paid for, or this would have been paid for because the applicant is the Veterans Memorial, correct? It's not the, it's not the landowner, correct?
I don't know if it's the landowner donating their time. I know it's for the benefit of the Veterans Memorial.
Which is a nonprofit of 503C, whatever that.
All right.
Thing is, okay.
Any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 As opposed, motion carries unanimously. 14.2, this motion has been tabled. 14.3, consider authorizing the advertisement for the receipts for bids associated with the Ellis Avenue sidewalk installation project.
No moved.
Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Sharitz or Mr. Secora, you have anything to add?
Is the, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Go for it.
Um, this is part of the grant program. I mean, we've got a grant for this work that we've met with um Eric and and Steve and Leonard and I came in on the second meeting. We met with the neighbors on Ellis.
Correct. It's the uh product involves installation of the sidewalk, and it is largely grant funded, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion for 14.3? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That was the ayes in favor. All those opposed, no one. Motion carries unanimously. I shouldn't just go back up to 14.2. This isn't, I I made a incorrect statement. It hasn't been tabled. It's just been withdrawn. I spoke to the chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, and so that's just been withdrawn. So just for clarification purposes. 14.4, can we get a motion to accept the staff recommendation for the 2023 road program with authorization to prepare bid documents and advertise?
So moved.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All the only thing I'll note is that the the recommended streets are Baron Road, Devon Road, Dutton Drive, Hilltop Road, Radner Drive, Rhodes Avenue, Rockwood Road, Spring House Lane, Woodhill Road, Frog Hollow Drive, Sleepy Hollow Drive, Sleepy Hollow Lane. Again, this is going to total, this represents one 19,630 linear feet or approximately 3.7 miles of the township's 52.88 miles of roadwork. Recommendation as stated in the memo provided to the board and on the agenda is based on the condition of the road surface and the work being primarily concentrated in two neighborhoods. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 14.4, excuse me, 14.5, consider accepting the contribution offer from Pico an amount of $66,313.71 in lieu of the half with pay road repaving, repairing on the portions of Baron Road, Devon Drive, Rhodes Avenue, Rockwood Road, Woodhill Road, where gas main replacement work took place.
I'm overproof.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? The only thing I'll add.
I have a question.
Hold on real quick, Mr. Mr. Russo. The only thing I'll add to this, hold on real quick, Mr. Russo. The only thing that I'll add to this and Mr. Sharitz, you can clarify. The reason why we're taking this is we just announced that we're going to be repaving those roads. As opposed to having Pico do half of the road, might as well take the money that they're required to provide us under the ordinance, throw that into the fund to help us cover the costs for the whole road or to do the whole width as opposed to just what's required under the ordinance.
Exactly. And and unfortunately, Pico had only done portions of the road anyway, so even if we had made them do half, it wouldn't have gone all that far. Uh, this contribution uh offer is a is a respectable one for that area.
Perfect. Mr. Russo, go ahead.
How do these numbers compare against the last road bids we got, George?
So uh, we actually, when I got this uh sent in, uh, Mr. Russo, I sent it over to Panoni to evaluate, and they said that it was uh absolutely in line with paving work these days. Now, I should.
Good. Thank you.
And I and I should explain that this is in lieu of the uh the the surface paving. Pico is still going to restore the trench above their infrastructure that they did. This is just for the, so we're not doing trench work.
Finish, just for the finish.
Exactly.
They just could top coat. Okay.
Any other board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 14.6, consider the request of the Newtown Township Municipal Authority to add repairs and repaving to the Malvern School parking lot and the private road segment of Pomona Avenue to the 2023 road program with the cost of adding those items to be reimbursed.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Sharitz, can you explain this to the public?
Sure. So the the municipal authority has to do some work in those two areas. And because they thought it would dovetail with a potential road program, they are getting votes themselves, but they asked if we could add it as a potential alternate with our program, one that could be separated. So it's not anything that would have any adverse effect on our bids. It's it's one that would be done as an alternate that would be able to be subtracted if necessary. But if it was uh beneficial when the bids came back for the municipal authority, it could help them with work they have to do.
Um, just to ask, um, so even, so just to confirm, because I know that there was an issue when they did the sewer authority about reimbursement and the township not getting that that money. Just to confirm, so in the event that we don't tie it on to our road program, they're still going to move forward with it themselves.
That is correct. That is my understanding, yes.
All right. Any other board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. 14.7, consider approving the following temporary and summer help as follows. Summer help for the Public Works Department at a rate of $18 an hour will light cap summer internship to the Codes Department at a rate of $18 an hour. Brandon Litwin, summer township internship at a rate of $18 an hour, Jack Collet.
Do you want to separate those?
Are you want to, I don't know if you want to refuse from the whole thing. You want to do that just for Will? Okay.
I can just recuse myself from the whole thing.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
You'll you'll just need to explain why you're accusing yourself.
Because one of the uh the first person on the list will like cap is my son.
All right, so motion.
So moved to approve.
Motion was made by uh Supervisor Partridge. Is there a second? I'll second it.
Second.
Supervisor Russo will second it. Uh, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed and any abstentions?
Yep, I'm abstaining.
So the vote there for the minutes is four in approval, zero in opposition, and one abstention.
Then you'll just sign a little memo stating that you're you abstained.
14.8, consider approving the 2024 budget schedule.
I'm overproof.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, to approve the 2024 budget schedule. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The only thing I'll note is that the first informational session is going to be June 13. It'll be a 3 o'clock session, a 6 o'clock session. Please continue to monitor the township website for the location. Now moving to old business. Section 15, 15.1, consider approving the request for Mainline Health for a waiver of land development slash PRD application requirements for a temporary radiology trailer.
We did submit a PowerPoint. Hopefully that can get pulled up. Good to see everyone again.
You have hard copies of this.
I think we might.
Enough for the board. You you want this into the notes? Yeah, you can take that.
Thank you.
Well, here, just because you wrote on it, I don't want to take it. All right. I don't know. Any caricatures that you drew in or anything?
Excuse me. Excuse me. What is the PowerPoint that you submitted? I I attached this. I received this, the drawings and the uh pictures. I did not receive the PowerPoint.
It's PDF that was sent in, just a PDF file.
Is that this, that when you continue, you see the planters and whatnot?
That's it. Thank you. So um, you all may recall, we were here.
Just state your name for the record, David.
David Falcone on behalf of Mainline Health. Uh, we were here, I guess it's been a few weeks, uh, almost a month maybe ago, seeking a waiver to move forward with the mobile unit that would be installed at the current Mainline Health building on the site. We uh understood the instruction from the board to go back and specifically evaluate two different things with respect to the project. First being, not necessarily in any order, but first being to ensure that the separation between the building and the proposed mobile unit would meet the appropriate IBC building standards. There's a requirement for either a 10-foot separation, which was mentioned to the applicant when we were here last time, or to have an appropriate fire-rated wall um at something inside of that distance. So it is uh being proposed, mobile unit at eight feet, and that would require a one-hour fire-rated wall, which would be part of the permitting process in the event that the mobile unit was approved. So as as part of that permit package, we would be submitting the appropriate fire rating, and that would obviously be inspected by the township staff in the event of mobile unit moved forward. So that was, we think, probably the easier of the two hurdles to get over. Um, the second was to come up with some alternatives with respect to screening the the mobile unit in the driveway that was constructed here. We did do a little bit of research and spoke to the developers of the site just to confirm that all the information you were presenting to the board at the last meeting was in fact correct with respect to why this driveway was was placed there and and what's happened there in the past. So um it was confirmed by the developers of the site that this was anticipated to be this type of a use, a mobile unit. And in fact, uh, in the past, there have been mobile units there for extended periods of time fo- shortly following the construction of the building. So that is in fact why, and you'll see in some of those photos, that that you can see the connections that are in that driveway. So that's just to confirm it, confirm we were here last time representing. And we did go back, uh, we did first, and Mr. Russo had asked us to first explore the ability to construct a wall um with building materials there that would be consistent. So we ran into issues there with respect to drainage. Uh, the the site is actually sloped at that area, so anything permanent that would go directly to the ground and not allow water to pass through would create drainage issues there in that site. So we went in in a separate direction, which was to explore uh the ability to use both fencing, kind of solid fencing, as well as landscape planters that would allow stormwater to run through it. So in the the package that you all have there, you see a couple of different options that we had come up with of of walls of the uh of the solid fencing that we were proposing. There are different colors that can go there, different heights, six feet versus eight feet, and then there's different types of planters that can be used. I think in the one picture you see that that's um smaller planters with lower with lower plant material. We can also use larger planters that would have obviously larger plant material. So we are certainly open to the the opinion and the direction of the township as to how they would like that area to look with respect to those planters and with respect to the material that's used for the fencing, um height versus including color, type, all of that. But the the idea of being able to construct a wall with more dense material that would come all the way to the bottom did not appear to be feasible from a stormwater perspective and a drainage perspective. But we have our landscape architect here to kind of answer any questions. We also have uh facilities folks from Mainline Health that were here with us last time to kind of take feedback from the township and direction as to what the township would prefer, what they're looking for. We're here again to kind of listen and take any feedback.
I I would just like to point out on the the one page you you stated that the building was purposely built for a mobile medical unit. Is that part of your PRD? And is that on the zoning?
So it was, it was built, uh, again, so I don't know if we can maybe scroll through.
Yeah, there's no page number. There's no page numbers.
Know what slide that was. It showed it was the image of the side of the building. Mark, do you know what? You submit that package. Leonard, can I take a look at your package?
You can. And this actually will, I'll let you answer the question, then I have a comment to make. Is that it?
This year, these are all the apps.
Right, but it's is a part of the PRD or part of the the approved plans?
It it was. So that's the information we got when we reached out to the developer. Was why was this done this way? And that was part of the initially approved plans.
Well, it was part of the building plans, but it was not part of the zoning. Is there a difference, Mr. Solicitor?
Use app. I do not have plans made, the the plans from the conditional use application and the conditional use decision, which is silent on the issue. I do know it was constructed with uh facilities to accommodate a trailer, and I do know there was a trailer there in the past just from fucking a different fact witnesses, uh, but I do not have the plans as to whether there was a provision on the plan for temporary facilities like this. Do you know if, do you have the old plan, the actual?
We went looking, we asked in fact for, we were not, we don't have them that we can find. The only thing we could do, I think that the solicitor also offered, was we went back in history, just asked folks that were around. We went back and asked folks that were part of that process, you know, what was done, why was it done, were there trailers there? Um, were there mobile units that were brought in? And and that was the, we got the same information that your your solicitor gathered.
So I I I actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. And um, I do recall that there was one there. So is this, it it, since you are now stating that there was previously one there and you'd like to put this one there, is this going to be something that you're gonna, that there, I know you can't, you don't have a crystal ball, but I mean, I really think that if this is going to be something that's going to be, you're saying it's five years. I mean, we're looking longer term than, to me, temporary is a year.
Right.
I'm, I mean, there's no definition for temporary, right? Um, but, you know, what you guys are suggesting, and I understand that that you've had this before, but what you have shown us is just you still want to have the trees. I understand about drainage, but there are temporary, there are there are petitions that could be put up so that you don't see it from the roadway, that you don't see it from the parking lot. I do recall seeing a a truck there, you know, a trailer, I'm sure, before when it first opened. And I thought, again, this is temporary because you were still filling up the building. The building is now, how long has the building been there and occupied?
I don't, I don't know the answer.
It's so it's it's longer than five years. I know that. Um, so I'm just thinking, I think I'm one of five people, but I'm feeling as though this is, you know, we're going to roll things in, roll things out, but we're not looking at it long term, and we're not looking. You know, the trees, right? Along along Westchester Pike, we didn't see those before because of. you know, the trees, right? Along, along Westchester Pike, we didn't see those before because of the widening, and I get it, that's not you guys, it was part of the Pendaup plan. I just think, I just wish that you'd all be a little bit more thinking forward in that this could be something that's there longer term, more than a year, more than five years, and that you look at how this is gonna, how this presents itself. Because from what I see, I don't really see anything different than what you brought us before.
And there's really nothing. We just brought, we brought examples of the screen, we didn't have anything like that before. I think you had asked.
I, but I, it would be if you could, again, I'm one of five and my colleagues have their own opinions. I just feel as though this doesn't represent what I was looking for when you came tonight. I was looking for something a little bit more, and I understand you can't put the walls up, I understand that, I understand about drainage, I understand about coverage. But you can't rely on those trees and that, that landscaping. You're, I think you're going to need something else beyond that landscaping, in addition to more landscaping. I'd like to see more landscaping on the front lawn.
So we, we do have a fence. There's, there's a solid potentially wall behind the landscaping we're proposing to construct. That's, if you look at the images, so there is no proposal where it's just landscaping. It's a solid wall essentially, or fence. And then in front of that is landscaping just to soften the image of the fence. The, it's, but it's not like a posting rail, it's a solid.
Right, the louvers, I see the louvers.
Yep, so that would be set behind the landscaping.
And I see it from the parking lot, but I don't see it from Westchester Pike.
So we do have it, we do have an image of the trailer kind of superimposed behind the trees. So the image would look like this from Westchester Pike.
Right, I see that, but I don't see any kind of, any screening. I don't want to call it a wall, I don't want to call that, we'll call this, we'll call it screening.
Right, so on this, from this image here, this is something we would need to work with the township's landscape architect. Because we would want to supplement the trees that are there, we obviously don't want to rip those out and build a wall.
But you, you would have the screening along there.
We would, so from this angle, we would supplement, I, they look to me like just massive, yeah, Barbara Whitey.
So, so wait, so look. We already have issues across the Westchester Pike Carter that we're dealing with, that, you know, and very close, it's kind of across the street or whatever. There's a brand new town center, so we're, we're, we're looking at the, you know, the, the view across our, you know, the car door of our, of our township here. That's a nice looking building, Mainline Health building. And, you know, okay, so the, the trees are there, but, but back to the previous meeting, I mean, we have this big white trailer with some colorful, you know, writing or whatever on it. And, you know, I, I, again, one of five. You know, I didn't want to see this out in front of the bill. You know, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not the look that I think that, that we want, right? In, in, in the township, and, and we're trying to, to change some of the look that, that's already in this corridor, right? So when I look at this, this picture with this black circle, which is, I think the same picture you have up, through these trees, I mean, you're still going to see the, the trailer. Now, I don't know if you're talking about putting screening behind the trees. There is the end that you would see from Charles Ellis Drive, and, and then there's the other view, and I'm not sure exactly what you can see uh, uh, from, from the other side, but, so I thought that would, you know, Mike Russo and I, I thought were kind of along the same page is that we don't want to see a trailer, see some kind of a, a structure, you know, and like Mike said, you know, a temporary building basically covering it where the trailer would be inside the temporary building. I think what you're saying is you, you can't do that because of drainage?
So for the record, my name is Travis North, I'm with Bowler, I'm a landscape architect registered in Pennsylvania. The question about putting this into a building, a temporary building, that of course opens up a whole bunch of additional permitting, and that's why this is a a, a consideration that we're looking at for a waiver of land development at the moment. There is existing screening out there today. What you are seeing on the screen right now is kind of a photo merge. This is a real photo that we took in April, and we merged in a, a 3D model of the actual trailer. And you can kind of see parts of it peeking through the bushes, but that's an artistic representation so that you can see that the trailer is actually there. What exists there today are our, our abrevities. They are approximately twenty feet tall. They are currently sitting about uh, three feet above Westchester Pike. Westchester Pike sits three feet, oh, I'm sorry, sits two feet above the space where the trailer will actually be sitting. There is an existing three-foot elevation change between Westchester Pike and this trailer area. And so, you know, we feel that the existing conditions warrant that there's a adequate screening from the view from Westchester Pike.
The way it is now?
The way it is right now.
Okay, so let me just interject to that. So after the meeting, I was standing on a sidewalk, right in front of this white fence, looking at, 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 at what your picture in there. And for sure, you know, I could, I would, if there were a trailer there, I would certainly be able to, to, to see that there was a trailer there from, from that view. So, you know, I mean, I think, guess that's kind of the, the point, that, you know, again, you know, you have a nice looking building here, and then this white trailer that could be there from a year to five years. I don't know, I mean, can't you consider around the back of the building, putting it somewhere else? You know, I, I know that was discussed, and there were reasons why we couldn't do that.
Yeah, and I think the reasons why we can't consider putting it somewhere else is quite frankly, it'd be much more visible from the public eye. Remember, this is part of a larger town center area, and it would be certainly much more visible from the other public views. This was a purpose-built area specifically for such a unit. And there's access from inside the building to this location, there's utility hookups, and any other location on the site would certainly require significant amount of additional renovations to make it possible.
But don't you guys keep resting your hat on the fact that just because there was a trailer there before, and there's the hookups? I mean, I think your strongest argument is not that, because it's irrelevant what the prior boards did, right? It, it, it's irrelevant to what was applied before. I think your strongest argument is potentially that more people would see it in the back. I think you have a better chance of screening it more, it's not so much as, uh, I don't know about that, but it's not going to be seen as much of people passing by on Westchester Pike. I just think that because there was a trailer there before, this is an awesome spot because there's already utilities, it's not really a, a strong argument.
Not necessarily, because if we were to put it somewhere else, we'd have to actually, we'd be, we'd have to reduce parking spaces to allocate it.
Well, it's already empty all the time anyway over there.
So there is a way to screen it. It's just those abrevieties are a joke. They're not, they're not like the ones we have in other parts of the town or in Edgemont. Or Willistown where there are hedge, you cannot see through or go through with any kind of person. You could walk through these. You could see right here picture, you go walk right through between these, these, these um big green giants, if that's what they are. And they're not a hedge. They're not fully together, fully blocking the view of anything. That's the problem.
We totally agree with Mr. Russo and, and with you. So what we're saying is. On this side, we know we would have to supplement those plantings. We would have to work with the township's landscape architect. But we know we have to fill that out. We don't, we don't disagree with that. So we know that that has to be better, but we're not proposing to take those down, which is why we're showing this image. We would like to keep those arbividy. We think they're mature. We think they can definitely help this screening here. But we do believe they have to be supplemented appropriately, either in front, inside, or behind with appropriate plantings. We are not proposing a fence back there. We think it's, it's better to plant in that area rather than build. And on the other side.
Well, we've had issues with when uh we've had, you know, um accommodations made for landscaping. And then the landscaping dies or and then it's not replaced in a, in a, in a timely manner. See, I feel as though you're treating this as the back of the building. This is the front yard. This is Westchester Pike. And I get it. It's you actually have two entrances on this building. You have the entrance from the parking lot, which looks great. But you're treating this that like this is the rear entrance. It's got to be more than just plantings. And I understand that you're confined by that island. The island is not very big because you've got plant, you've got parking lot, parking spaces on the other side. They can't treat this as um the backyard. I mean, people drive down Westchester Pike all the time. They walk. We're, we're creating, we're, we're creating a walkable community. You're going to people walking on the sidewalk and they're going to be looking at this trailer. I mean, you've got to be a little bit more creative than just the plantings. And I appreciate the plantings because. I um, I'm the, I'm the uh, the landscape. I'm the one who beats the drum about landscaping everywhere that I don't want to see things. But in here, I think it's got to be, it's got to be multi-layered.
So from this angle, from Westchester Pike, looking back, which is what we're kind of speaking about right now. We, we did consider kind of a solid fence as well. I keep calling it a fence, but it's really not, it's not a fence. Right. And we thought that would be less attractive. It would, it would present more as almost like a trash enclosure.
Well, it doesn't have to be solid.
That's where I think you're in a rock.
Yeah.
That's where I think you're in a rock and a hard place. I don't, I think we're putting lipstick on a pig here.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I think that's what the difficulty is.
Yeah.
Um, that you guys are really between a rock and a hard place with the idea of having a trailer there. Um, I, I cut you off where I cut you off, Dave. I'm sorry. You were answering, but, but I do have a few questions. If you want to finish that point and then I'll, I'll go.
So I, I just wanted to say, so we did explore that and we thought from this angle, it would be better to fill those holes with trees. But that we knew from the other angle viewing from Charles Ellis, it had to be both a solid structure and landscaping again to soften the view.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be solid. You can do, uh, you can do something different. You can be a little bit more creative. And for people who can't see me, I'm making gestures of, you can have a panel and then set the panel back, but plantings there you can separate it. So it's not a solid wall. It's not a solid, I'm designing their buildings now. Um, it's not a solid um structure. So it does not look like a, a trash enclosure. You can be more creative and then you can do your plantings. It's just an idea. It doesn't have to be, it can be more open um for air circul-, you know what I mean? But not necessarily a solid piece. I'm sorry to interrupt here, but um, but um, that's, you gotta be a little bit more creative. It can't just be, and, and these, and the landscape, you're a landscape architect. It's got to be a little bit more robust. And maybe they have to spend a little bit more money and change out the plantings on a regular basis. Just an opinion. I'm one of five people. I'm just putting suggestions out there. I'm not saying that that's what you have to do. It's just a suggestion to try to make this look better.
Let me ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, first one is, and I'm guessing the answer to this is yes, but um, I mean, I, I, I'm kind of shocked that the overall landlord, he's fine. Where that company's fine with having this, this trailer in this location.
They, they, they believe it was made for that.
Because there was a trailer there before. I, I don't, I just find that interesting because I know that. We're very sensitive to anything, you know, about that site. So I'm surprised that they're fine with having a trailer in front of, you know, what they refer to as a, a Mecca. Um, there was discussion before about whether it was two years. I think the original application said two years and then the plan that said that it could be up to five years. What is the lease term on the trailer?
So we were talking about that earlier. It's really, it's going to be, it's two years. I think the ultimate expanse is up to five. But we've leased the equipment for two years.
And is there option terms for renewals? Is that why you're saying you got the, are you doing one year, three, one year renewals? Or what is the max that this contract has been running for? And just state your name for the record, sir.
Sure. Uh, Mark Tipton with Mainline Health Project Manager. So the, the lease terms are. It's a lease for two years with the option to convert this to a permanent location. Um, but the lease is, has the ability to renew up to five years if needed, right? But, but it's really a two-year lease with the option to make this trailer with the um PET CT camera. Go to a permanent location.
So when you say can permanent to have the potential to convert it to a permanent location, does that mean that let's say in two years is wildly successful? Are you going to come to us then and ask for a formal installation of this trailer at this location?
No, it would be inside the building.
Would be inside the building. Okay. So you're just leasing the technology, not necessarily the trailer? Okay.
Yeah, the trailer would go away and all the different improvements which talking about in that alleyway would also go away.
Front yard.
Back to its original.
Not, not alleyway, front yard.
Front yard.
I know, I know we're splitting hairs, but that, that's important. Let me ask you another question, sir, before you walk away. Mr. Tipton, the trailer itself. The, you know, is there, have you ever seen one of these in person?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So you're familiar with the way they operate?
Yes.
Do they emit any sound? What's the, what's the sound emitted, admittance on this?
Uh.
Are they loud?
This one would be a little bit different. I wouldn't know because it's a cutting edge technology with a PET CT for cardiology. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I don't think that it's very noisy.
The, the ones that you're.
Not like an MRI. MRI is typically the more noisy of the diagnostic.
I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the, the technology inside. The trailer itself will have any sound that gets come.
Correct. No, no, the trailer, the cab will drop off the, the, what we call the camera. And then that cab goes away and only comes back when that trailer needs to get relocated or serviced. So the cab won't be there running at all.
So there's.
How does heat air conditioning work?
Oh, it's, well, it does have a generator. It has a generator.
It'll have a generator.
Correct.
So what size generator are we looking at?
Uh, I don't have that right in front of me.
Because one of the other things you all need to take into consideration.
That's, that's a problem.
Is exactly that. I mean, we have, there's noise complaints already, not well.
No, they're, they're. So it has a generator for backup. I'm sorry. So it's, it's, so in the, in the, in our building, it's cooked to our building power. So it, it's powered from the building.
I understand it's powered from the building, but there has to be some sort of HBAC system attached to that.
Powered from our building.
You guys are running duck work into duck work into this as well?
No, it has its own.
That's what I just, that's what I just said. So it has to have its own independent HBAC, correct?
So you have an air conditioning connecting unit, for instance, that's going to be on the roof of the trailer or next to the trailer, the connecting unit?
Which is it on top or next to?
Uh, I'd have to look. I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's on the side or the, or under the carriage or.
Because we're right across the street from a residential neighborhood. I know that the argument sometimes when people want to get something approved, they say, well, it's off of Westchester Pike. And that's all fine and good, but that neighborhood is, you can hear a lot of noise that gets, that gets dispersed. No matter what it is, whether it's construction, whether it's a generator, you know, SAP's generator going off, anything. Um, you know, that's a, it's a level of sensitivity that you need to take into consideration because this is directly across a residential neighborhood. Um. All right. I think that's it that I have right now. Uh, the one thing I will note is, and I think that this is a disadvantage for the residents. And so I apologize, but my, well, I shouldn't apologize. My understanding is that our township staff was very clear on the deadline for when things need to be submitted and everything. Um, I'm not trying to like, this has no implication on your application whatsoever, Mr. Calcone and everyone else. But when our township staff, you know, they're moving toward, they're, they're implementing what the board has established. To make sure that we get materials on a timely fat, to not only this board, but again, to the public, so they can be posted on the agenda. Again, this has no reflection on your application whatsoever. I want to be clear on that. But I don't like when I hear from my town, from our township staff that there are telling, you know, the applicant's deadlines and those deadlines aren't being met. Um, so if we can really just try to, if you guys are coming back up here, button that up to make sure that that information, because we're discussing things. There's a whole crowd of people here. There's a whole crowd of people online that don't have that material there. And so it just creates a little bit of a difficulty when we have to then explain to the public what it is that we're voting on or what it is that we're, we're discussing. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page that I'm moving forward.
Well, just a. Overall comment. So I mean, the, the request here is, uh, you know, to approve a waiver. So I, I, I don't know where, where, where everyone else thinks we're at, but I mean. Um, I think there's, there, there's more work. You're saying that. Your, your objective was to come in and say, you know, we have these plantings. We need to do more plants. That, that was the. That was your recommended solution, right?
Yeah, I think our recommended solution was we thought Charles Ellis Drive had the most visibility of the trailer. And that has the screening and some additional plantings to soften what we thought would look like a trash enclosure from that angle. Um, and, and again, I think we thought that. The, the existing. Arbividaes.
Right.
Trees would provide enough screening on the Westchester Pike side, but that doesn't mean we can't go back and, and add to our screening plan.
Yeah, I think your solution for the side is, is kind of, you know, I, I mean, I don't know if everybody agrees with it, but I mean. You know, it does block the, the trailer and so forth. Um, but I think the, the, the concern. That, that you've heard from several people is, is, is the front. And I think to me, that was my concern all along. Um, there was a question by Cardo. The, the aesthetics along that corner. So.
I think maybe if we could maybe take one more continuance, we'll take one more shot at it. If it doesn't appear that way, we'll just go through the land development process, which is really what we're trying to, to avoid expedite. But we'll give it one more shot, do a, a better depiction on the front towards Westchester Pike and show some actual screening there. Some other alternatives that maybe might uh provide additional buffering. And we'll reevaluate the Charles Ellis Drive angle as well and try and give you some additional alternatives on that. And the consultants heard the instruction today to get things in uh timely. So they will do that and hopefully we'll come back with.
Yeah. And Dave, just to be clear, I mean, I, because I don't want you to think me individually uh that. Depending on what comes back, I mean, I have to be honest with you. You guys have a very high hurdle still in my mind, just me individually. I don't like this idea whatsoever. I'm willing to consider, to continue to see what you all come up with. Um, but me, myself is just one. I mean, sitting here today, if you were going to force me to take a vote, um, I don't think it would go too favorably. So I just want to be honest with you.
Appreciate that.
That, you know, I, I don't want, I, I, I'm just not a big fan of it right now. So, you know, if you guys knock my socks off, then great. Um, but I just want to be honest with you.
Appreciate that.
Done enough work with you, but I think it's important for you to know that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. We do. So we'll, we'll either come back with a better plan or we'll just pursue the land development and do what happens that way. Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. So that's fifteen point one. So. They requested a continuance. I guess we'll just take a vote. Continue at all in favor. I guess, can I get a sec? Can I get a second on that? Motion was made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Well, now move down to section sixteen, excuse me, which is board comment. Um, I believe that this is the item where, yes, I did sixteen point one, where I added a, uh, an agenda item. Of discussion and possible motion regarding written public comment. That the board receives. Uh, so a little bit of, I guess, like walked on memory lane. Um, back in twenty twenty, when the world shut down, uh, and everything went virtual. Uh, during the pandemic, we, along with every other municipality and governmental entity, did remote meetings. Uh, it was in that setting where everybody was virtual that we started the written public comment. Um, that was provided to the board, um, either through the Dropbox or on the online via email, excuse me. Uh, at the time, when everything was remote, the then chairman, Mr. Non, would read the entire public comment and the public comment would be posted online. When we resumed in-person meetings, we continued to take written public comment. Um, but the board did not post that public comment uh to the agenda or to the website. What we did was in accordance to the Sunshine Act, just provided a summary of what the comment was about in the minutes, which again is all that's required under the Sunshine Act. We have since, and we've been operating under that mantra uh since we went in person and which is also consistent. Uh, in the different five counties that I practice in with local governmental bodies and how they handle. Uh, they actually don't allow public comment really to be forwarded into the board. Uh, instead, they require everybody to come in person. We've received a complaint about how written public comment uh is being handled by the board. Uh, and so this is what's necessitating this discussion. On April tenth of two thousand twenty-three, the President of the United States signed a House resolution, which officially terminated the national emergency. Related to the COVID pandemic. And on May third, the World Health Organization also noted that COVID is no longer a global pandemic or a global threat. Um. With that being so, so with that background, what my suggestion would be. Uh, and what I think we should have a discussion on is to consider that we stop taking the written public comment. We will still take public comment from members of the, uh, from the members of the public to provide it through the, the public email Dropbox that we have. Uh, it'll be provided to the board so that we can, so that you can say, hey, you know, take this under advisement, take that under advisement. But it won't be formal public comment. Instead, uh, we would ask that that public comment be presented to the board as is consistent with our neighboring municipalities. And this is consistent to prior, what, prior to what we did during the, during the, the, prior to the pandemic, excuse me. So that is my kind of discussion point. Uh, again, to align us more to what other surrounding municipalities are doing to ensure that. Everybody is still having their, you know, it still provides them an opportunity to provide public comment to us. Well, I can say public, their thoughts to us. But if they want public comment, be part of the minutes and for it to be read into the record. I think it's important for those individuals to come and read or provide their public comment to us. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I, uh. I, I, I mean, I agree with you, uh, especially given the. The president's uh declaration and the World Health Organization. I mean, it's time to, to look at our policy and revise it and, you know. I mean, if we need a, a motion along that, I would make a motion that, that we um take the thoughts of uh. Of Leonard and revise and formalize our, uh, public comment policy. If we need a motion for that, uh, that would be my motion. We'd move forward.
Yeah. And I want to, and I don't know if you want to add anything before I get into what else.
I, I just, not that I don't trust you, Mr. Chairman, but uh, Mr. Solicitor, can you uh opine on that? This is the uh, that uh, in fact, you know, the Sunshine Act that we are following that correctly. Um, again, not to, not to uh.
Always get a second opinion.
Yeah, just so that um, that we all understand that this is. This is, we'll, we'll be in the confines of, of what we're supposed to be.
The Sunshine Act provides for public comments, where, wherever you're going to have legislative meeting, you know, the meeting. Folks have an opportunity to come in and address their, their government. And so. Agenda items, you can, you can have people address agenda items in one spot at the beginning of the agenda. And not talk for the rest of the agenda until the very end where they can then talk about non-agenda items. And that's, that's what you do. You could have, uh, that's what you do currently. You know, people talk about each agenda item as you go through. So the, another way of doing it, sometimes that could be helpful. Sometimes that could be disruptive. Sometimes as you've done. Is we set agenda items only upfront and then as you go through, make exceptions to have. Public comment at each agenda item because you thought it would be more helpful at that particular moment and not disruptive. Uh, so those are all things that, that you could do. There's nothing that I'm aware of in the Sunshine Act that provides for or requires. Written public comment or what you do with. Writings that you receive saying, here, please take this as a public comment. I'm not aware of any rule or law that would require you to. To accept that and, and do anything in particular with that. So that was an accommodation we were made. During the COVID pandemic, it said, look, there's, we have multiple ways that you can have this. At one point, people were reading in other people's words and others' words coming out of your mouth, making it sound like it's, you know, it's your words instead of somebody else's. Then there was a period where maybe at the same time, it was posted on the internet under public comment where people could actually. See, it's actually somebody else's document on the township website. And then as we progress. That's what's good. The Sunshine Act requires people who make public comment, you record that in the minutes. Not word to word, just what's the name, the individual made the comment and what comment was made, right? Just what, what was the subject of the public comment? That's really what's required. So rather than go through these. Fine details. If you don't call it public comment, cause any confusion when somebody thinks this is going to be on a website or read out loud as if they were there speaking. It's just not, if you make it not public comment, it's just, there is a. Bot, the township email where, or township website where comments can be submitted. Writing or consideration by the board. As long as it's clear to everyone that it's not public comment, you're not creating that expectation. I see no reason to do anything other than do anything with that other than reading. And then. Call up on it if you think it's appropriate or, and, and consider it like, just like any other comments that you receive, you might receive from somebody. Who sends you a letter. Steal on the street or anything else.
So it's back to where we were.
Back to where you were. I don't see any legal problem with that.
But wouldn't we, wouldn't it be prudent to just, you know, put the thoughts together and formalize and adopt policy and how we're dealing with this in the future?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, you could.
A board policy.
You could limit public comment uh to a specific time period. So just, you know. We don't really have that problem right now when people are going on and on and on for twenty minutes, but sometimes people try to fill a buster. So you could have policies that say public comment does not exceed a certain timeframe. Uh, like I said, you could regulate when the public comment is given. Uh, meeting goes too long, you can cut off public comment and resume it at a, at a later time. There's, there's all kinds of things that you could do. A policy or just if you just wanted to handle discrete issues, uh, if you could have a big comprehensive policy, you're just handling discrete issues. Written public comment. Or written comment.
And, and I think that's it. What, I think what you just said there is important because I know that there will be some who try to misconstrue this as us limiting public comment. That is the complete opposite of what we're doing. What we're doing is we're. What we're doing is we're returning back um to the normal practice. We're returning back to what is the practice in surrounding municipalities around us. Additionally, Newtown Township, and this is always a shock to a lot of people that I talk to in these positions, whether they're a commissioner, supervisor, council member. We don't have a time limit on how long you can speak. We've never uh cut someone off when they're, when they're, when they're speaking. A lot of other municipalities have time limits. On how long someone can speak, speak once. Um, but what this does is it creates, quite frankly, equity of knowing, you know. If you want to make a public comment, you have to come up and state it. Uh, if you want to send us something, you can send it to us. It's great. Um, but the other thing too, it's a little awkward when someone sends an email and says, this is public comment, Leonard Outtieri, I think you're an idiot. For me to then to sit here and read, Leonard Outtieri, I think you're an idiot. Um, you know, that's not what happened, but I'm just saying to, to, to put someone else's words. Uh, you know, in our mouths, it, it's just, I think now that we are officially out of the pandemic. Um, both by the president and by the World Health Organization, I think it's important that we get back to a sense of normalcy. And again, it allows those people who want to provide that public comment, that if we are of a clear line of, of, of how to handle that. Um. So I have nothing else to add to this. Now, this was an item that was added to the agenda. And so um, in keeping with what we're discussing, if anyone has any public comment on this item, we have to allow for the opportunity since it was added. To come up and speak. So feel free to come on up and speak, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Louis Rosenthal, Twenty Harrison Drive. I, I didn't know this was going to be a topic tonight, but at the top of. Um, your agenda and every agenda in the township, it, the words encouraging communication are there. Um, it's part of the township's mission statement. Um. The only avenue for public comment for many residents of Dunwoody and, and others who are not able to come to the township meetings might just be through email. So I would encourage you to maybe think about alternatives that allow you to fulfill your mission of encouraging um communication.
And, and we all have township emails. Um, and we do get, right, I understand. And I just want everyone else to understand that we are accessible through that and through um any comment or, or anything that's addressed to the board. Uh, goes to the township office and we are then forwarded that information. So we are, and we are out in the community as well. So we are very accessible. I think that the point of this, and, and correct me if I'm wrong. The thought was that public comment that is written like that um is verbatim, that it's going to be out on uh, uh. Uh, Rich, correct me because I think there was confusion because it says public comment. It's really written comment as opposed to, is that, is that kind of the clarify this?
Clarify. It seems to me, uh, what Chairman is saying. Asked me if I thought this was appropriate under the Sunshine Act and I said, yes. So, uh, I had an opportunity to think about this. I, I believe what the intent is just to clarify that. I'm going to make public comment, which is going to be report for, you know. Make your comment, it will be recorded in minutes, Mr. Rosenthal's comment, in the minutes. It'll say something along the lines of Mr. Rosenthal, what Rosenthal spoke and uh. About uh, you know, whether public comment, you know, in support of public comment being admitted, something, something along those lines. But if you want your comments to be in the minutes, be heard in public, you come in and make them. If you want to submit written. Comments, written letters, written emails to township or commissioner or supervisor review, you can do that. But just to clarify that this isn't quote, public comment under the Sunshine Act, so it's not going to be treated as if you were here. Certain way. I think that's the, I think that's my understanding of what the issue is.
So we dealt with public comment in certain way before the pandemic. Pandemic, the last three years has, has, has changed the way that we, we've dealt with uh public comment. Um, so, you know, I think now we look at how we dealt with it previously, you know. Are there any changes need, need to be made? And, and what's the new normal way of, of, of dealing with public comment? And we should come back the next meeting or the meeting after that. And, and basically you just explained that here's how we deal with public comment. You know, in, in the future, you know. Whether that's the exact way we dealt with it prior to the pandemic, or we want to make, you know, some, some changes when we adopt the formal policy or whatever. Um, but um. You know, things have changed and, and uh, now, um, you know, whether the most effective way is, you know, email. Like, when you said, we all have emails. Anyone can send an email to the board, you know, it's, it's there on the website. Is that going to be the primary uh communication path? Um, let's define that and come back and say, look, here, here's the norm. Here's how we're going to. Here's how we're going to do it um in, in the future, now in the future. So to me, you know. Should continue this uh discussion after putting together some thoughts.
Yeah, I, I think without believing we're in the point and then we'll, we'll wrap this up. What Supervisor Patrick just said and what Supervisor Robert, like I've said, there's still, and as I alluded to, or as I made clear and as this was to make there. There's still going to be individuals who have the ability to email the entire board to provide us their comments. Um, but just the fact that it won't be read into the record or as part of the record is really the only difference that, that's occurring here. They're still going to be able to communicate with the entire board. They're going to be able to communicate with individual supervisors. But having it actually as part of the minutes under the Sunshine Act is really the only thing that's changing. It's us posting it on the website and us having to read it into the record. Um, all right. So with that being said, um, we will allow the um, where I, I'll make a motion to. Um, I guess we don't have to direct you because you're already on retainer, right? To, to, to just draft a, a policy on this. Um, do you want us to make a motion on that or just that we direct you?
If you want me to just.
Yeah. All right. Perfect.
Basically saying that we comply with the Sunshine Act. Public comments can be recorded, may have said, written comments will be accepted by the board. Uh, but they're not going to be treated as public comment.
And we can provide individually some thoughts. If you, if you want.
Sure. Anybody can give me thoughts and I'm always happy to discuss any.
All right. Now we'll move down to section seventeen, public comment. I know that we have, oh, you know, line jumped someone who was here before you though, Paul. So let's go to the individual who lives at thirty-five twenty-one Horton Road, if you don't mind, ma'am. I know that we have, oh, you know, line jumped someone who was here before you though, Paul. So let's go to the individual who lives at thirty-five, twenty-one Horton Road, if you don't mind, ma'am. And then again, if you can just state your name, I just read your address, but just.
Hi, I'm Sandy Klein, thirty-five, twenty-one Horton Road. Thank you for the opportunity to be present. It's quite interesting and thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'd like to share with you the experience that I've had with the township permit process. And I'm doing so trusting that you value what it feels like to be a resident and to go through the processes that are. Been determined by the township. So I need to give you just a little bit of backdrop. I relocated from Northern California and purchased this home on Horton Road. It's actually not inhabitable. There's a hole in the roof. There were large dead trees that threatened the safety of the home. And the interior, interior is sort of circa early nineteen fifties, you name it. It was the dirt. Thus, everything was from there. So it is a complete home renovation. I embarked on the permit process and I have now invested three months. In that permit process, attempting to be able to receive permits to begin my work. The process has been exceedingly frustrating and at times painful, just outright painful. And, and I, and I hear some of you say that you live in the township too. So I'm also trusting that there's value in sort of a fresh eyes experience. I, it, not only is it frustrating, but it has real life consequences because it's uninhabitable. I am paying two housing costs, my mortgage plus temporary housing until the project can be done, which is four or five months. I also have all my personal belongings from California in storage, which is not cheap. Every delay in permits confounds my contractor's schedule and I feel that I, I could be at risk. Or actually starting the project when the permits are available and concluding it in the timeline that I had hoped. And I've been really patient. I know I'm not the only homeowner in need and I understand and I really do value, truly value the role of the permit process. We're on the same page. We're trying to assure a safe, efficient process that. My neighbors can be proud of, that my family can be safe in, we're not at odds in that way. I've worked in hospitals for over forty years and I've lived and worked, worked by standards and regulations. They're not new to me. My complaint is not related to the work that we had to do to submit permits or even the cost of the permits. The work that the contractor and the architects have done, but rather the actual process to get a permit through to completion. I, I want to make it very clear, people are really kind. The folks that I have interacted with are just really kind people. That doesn't mean they're fully knowledgeable though. And I think that's been part of my process. Suzanne and I have gotten to know each other more recently. But I'll give you an example. When one day I met with Heather and I said, okay, Heather, I think we have everything this time. I think we answered all the questions. Is there anything that I'm missing? I, I really want to make this easy for you. And she goes, well, no, you got everything. You just have to pay the fee. The what? You have to pay the fee? What fee? I paid my permit fee. No, no, you have to pay three, three and a half percent. Of the contract cost as a fee. And I said, oh my gosh, I didn't know that. Where would I have known that? Where would I have read that? She goes, it was on the pro, in your permit. Gosh, I don't, I don't think I ever saw it in there. Suzanne and I reviewed the permit page today. And there's no mention of a fee. And, and I'm okay with a fee. I, I just sort of don't like surprises. And when I asked what the fees, the fee was, she said, I think it's three or three and a half percent. So I went on the webpage. And there is a two, twenty twenty-one and a twenty twenty-two fee schedule that do not reflect a three or three and a half percent fee. Suzanne and I talked about that today. She had a staff member quickly go online and pull up fee schedule and she brought up something from twenty twenty-one. And today you said, we've now got, and I'm like, it's Meg. And Suzanne just sent me an email and said, the twenty twenty-three fee schedule is now posted. When I began this process and when I investigated, that was not available. When I, I had net new square footage of four hundred and ninety-seven square feet. Just under that threshold. And I say net new, had over five hundred new, but I was taking away impervious surface. And both Andy and others said, well, you don't get credit for what you took, take away. And that confounded me. I didn't understand. And the more I thought about it, it occurred to me, it's likely because there's a stormwater management problem that currently exists. And that got confirmed for me tonight, that that is true, but you do not get credit for taking away impervious surface. And, and I'll mention that. When I spoke with Andy, also incredibly kind and helpful. He mentioned that that was likely the case, that I would not get credit for removal of impervious surface. But he said the engineer would have the final say. And in fact, are you, are you Eric, engineer? Hi, Eric. And in fact, Eric did say, yep, you don't get credit for that fifteen hundred dollars for that review. Andy already knew that. Why did I have to pay fifteen hundred dollars for somebody else to do the math? I get it, you know, credentials or whatever, it required an engineer review, but I was scratching my head a little bit about why I had to pay that fifteen hundred dollars. I have to do simple remediation. I don't mind doing simple remediation. I'm putting systems in. And on April twenty-fourth, I submitted the plan and paid the additional fifteen hundred dollars. Which is the ten year, as I understand it, the ten year. To cover ten years of inspection that I am upholding what I committed to do, which, which is fine. I'm, I'm okay with that. But when I initially got the letter that said, you have to pay your fifteen hundred dollars, I, I went to the office and said, but I already paid fifteen hundred dollars. What's the second? And the, and the response I got from the office, we don't know. The engineer's not part of our department. We don't know. And when, in real desperation today, and I have to admit, fearful desperation. I met with Suzanne because I have no idea where my permit exists today or this morning. And she was kind enough to listen to me and she said, well, part of the problem is we're getting so many more permit applications. It just takes so long. And, and I'll tell you what I mean by that. The real estate market is changing and people are improving what they have. So if more permits are coming in. And it's a question I ask, is the department staff appropriately enough to handle the volume of permits? And, and Suzanne said, the problem is Andy's the only one that can review. And the problem is that your whole home renovation falls in the same pile as somebody who wants a permit for a fence. And I get it, I'm, I'm no important than the person that wants the fence. But could it be that a different process might make sense for somebody who is doing a whole home renovation versus somebody? Who's doing a fence? It's a first come, first served. We have no in-process. Pile. Every time you resubmit an answer to a question, it goes on the top of the pile. That could be somebody who just submitted. It's, you know, sort of that first come, first serve. And I said to Suzanne today, you know, when I. Came in the building, there were all these flat screen TVs saying, you can learn yoga and you can, all these wonderful things that the township. And offer. And I felt like, gosh, I wish there was a course, if you're going to submit a permit. Here's what you need to know and how it really works. And you said to me, gosh, we really, I should, we, we used to have a video, I should dust that off and get that back up. And I mentioned again that the fees were not posted. At the outset of my submission of permits, I called to schedule a banding. I have seen people at the desk upstairs with scrap pieces of paper saying, here's my information. I wanted the best shot for the quickest, most efficient. Response so that I, I wouldn't incur these thousands of dollars of extra housing and storage fees. Andy was terrific. He said, just follow the permit, just submit everything on there. I had a reputable contractor, a reputable, reputable architect. Neither of them have worked in the township before. And it, it soon became clear that Andy did like things a certain way. And those questions came to us and we worked quickly to get him the answers. But when the answers are returned, the fifteen day clock starts again. So that's what's, why it's taken over three months. The questions were not difficult. They were basic. Where are you putting your carbon monoxide meters or whatever they're called? What is the, the, the square footage of the landing on that new basement steps? They were very simple. But to get on that pile and have to wait three weeks to have that reviewed was incredibly painful. I mentioned that I submitted the remediation on the stormwater on April twenty-fourth. Until today, I had no idea where that stood. And when I inquired at the office, the answer I got, I don't know, we don't know what their process. Well, okay, but who do I go to, to find out? And. Thankfully today at four thirty, Suzanne was able to notify me that Andy had in fact, and today was the fifteenth day. And that has been my experience in each submission. I got my answer on the fifteenth day. At four thirty, I got a call and was told that my permit was approved, but we still didn't know about the township engineer. And thankfully, because of this evening's event, I was able to get clarity that it sounds like Eric tomorrow. Okay, yeah, okay. And, and I thought I, I share this because it's truth and I'll trust that you'll accept truth. That the township is so friendly and the neighbors are so nice on either side and. Of my home and people walking dogs, hey neighbor, welcome. See, I got a lot of work going on. How's it going? Well, I'm, I'm just working on getting my permits. Oh gosh, that's terrible. That's an awful experience. And I didn't know details. I didn't, I didn't ask details. I sort of let it go in one ear and out the other. What was, what, what was fact for me is that one hundred percent of the people that said they had experience with the township. Said it was incredibly frustrating and they feared speaking up about it. Because they thought the process would get worse for them. And when Suzanne and I talked today, I said, I don't live in a township where I fear asking questions. You, you know, fear that speaking up is somehow a crime or you're going to pay for it in some way. So I get the impression, and I'll wrap up, that the way the process works today is because it's always the way the process has worked. And I, again, I'm trusting that, you know, hearing from a resident's experience, that you hear it as meaningful feedback. That it helps to identify pain points. And I hope that maybe the process could be reviewed. Do you have enough staff? Are there metrics for turnaround for certain kinds of projects? Should there be a separate process for large scale projects? Having done construction projects in healthcare. Over almost forty years. It feels to me like if I could have sat across the table from Andy with the architect and the contractor for an hour and a half. What took three months could have been settled in that short meeting. And, and like the gentleman mentioned earlier, I also am aware of the mission statement. And I want to, I want to live in a community that lives by that mission statement. But I don't want to live in a, in a township where you're fearful, fearful, frustrated and angry. And, and I'll end with, you know, working in hospitals, we often. Would ask our patients to complete surveys because it was important for us to know. What it felt like then to get care and to learn what processes. If improved, continuous improvement would make that value proposition better than it is today. And so thank you for the time to speak.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Klein. I normally, my practice and, quite frankly, the practice of a lot of the supervisors here. Not to do a back and forth because it is just that, just public comment. But I want to thank you. For your words. I want to thank you for coming up here tonight. I want to thank you for explaining your situation to us because. If we don't hear about it, then there's nothing that we can fix, right? It's, it's like the, the, the old adage, we, we complain to people who think like us. We think like people who think like us, and then we, we never resolve the actual issue. So I want to thank you for your words tonight. I want to thank you for coming up here. I think. Number one, that this board has no interest whatsoever in what, letting residents even think a scintilla. That someone could live in fear for asking a simple question to their elected representatives. We all live in this township. We all raise families in this township. We all go to the same stores in this township. So that's first and foremost. The other thing that I'll add is. Our township manager is not here today. He's out. We let him out every once in a while for a personal vacation. But what we will do and what I'll make a, a promise to you, and I'll get you, get your contact information and I'll give you my contact information is. We will put you in touch with our township manager. He is the one who, he is the CEO of the township, if you will. The board sets the policy and, you know, the broad mission and goals and vision of the, of the town. The township manager is the one who implements it on a day-to-day operation. He oversees the township staff, including the police department, the public works, the solicitor and the engineer. I'll make sure, in addition to this recording, that he made aware of the notes that I myself took here. But again, you know, I appreciate everything that you said. Thank you for it. And at the end of this, I'll give you my contact information and. We'll make sure that we get the ball rolling on, on, on some hopefully resolution. One way or the other, I'll make a promise that I'll reach out to you when he returns from his, when he returns from his trip. But I again, appreciate your feedback. So thank you.
Leonard, I'd like, Leonard, I'd like to ask her one or two questions, so, so I'm clear, because I, she went through pretty fast. Did you say you submitted for basically a full house renovation and it took you about three months to get the permits?
Oh, my.
I'm sorry, who's asking?
That's Mike. This is Supervisor Russo and I'm, I'm calling to understand, I'm trying to understand, you said you hired an architect. And I wasn't sure if I understood correctly that he was from out of town. He hasn't worked in Newtown Square before. And I was wondering the timing, it's, you said it took you to get the permits for, and your house is being fully renovated, correct?
Well, I refer to it as a full renovation, windows, doors, roof, HVAC, floors, cabinets. E- everything. It's down, going down to the studs. Everything is being reduced with an addition.
Okay.
The architect lives in Hebertown, is quite experienced, but does a lot more work in like Bethlehem, Allentown area, but she was recommended to me. I'm sorry, did you have another question?
Yeah. How long did it take you to get your permits? If your permits are ready today, you said you submit, I didn't know when you submitted for your building permits.
It's about three months. And, and there were, I think, two or three. Times where what we submitted, Andy had a few questions, legitimate questions. We were happy to answer those, but it took three weeks for him to look at those. And, and I'll give you an example, you know, it took us a while to sort of get into his head. The code is very long and detailed. And so one of the questions, and fair play, it was a fair question, how are you going to vent your fireplace? I haven't even bought the fireplace because I didn't want to spend money until I know I can get permits. But we were quick to give the answers, but again, in every case, it was a full fifteen days until. Those answers were reviewed and in a couple cases, we submitted the answers, the architect submitted the answer in letter form and he wanted it on. The, the, the plan, which, which is fine. But again, if I could, if we could have sat across the table with him for an hour and a half. Two hours, I think we could have beginning to end, which is why I made the comment, is it one process or all?
I made the comment, is it one process for all or is there potential to evaluate if different processes might be helpful?
Well, I have to be very honest with you. I'm in this business and I've worked in over two thousand. Municipalities, okay? And three months with, with many revisions, it sounds like three or four times you had to submit revisions. You, you can't expect somebody to take your revisions today and look at them tomorrow morning. It's just, you can see all the construction that's going on in town. There's a lot of people redoing their houses, as you've mentioned. There's a lot of people doing new construction. And so if he gets something in as a revision and there's other work in front of him, he. Fifteen days are pretty good turnaround. You might not feel that way. But in this business, in today's environment, it is a good turnaround. And I'm just trying to tell you, as a person in the same industry that does this for a living. That it took you three months, but you had three revisions. You used an architect that does most of her work up in the Lehigh Valley, not in this marketplace. And it, it, she's just not familiar with the way things are done in this town. But he treats everybody the same. Everybody's treated the same. And I have many friends that have done work in this town and they've commented to me that he is very fair. And I know, I know for myself, from getting involved, where people tell me the same thing. Well, we submit a revision, but we don't have an answer. Okay? When you look into it, three week turnaround on a revision, sometimes there's a lot of work going on in town. You, you have to be cognizant of that. Like you can't sit down, if he sat down and met with every person that came in with a set of plans for a full renovation. For two hours, he wouldn't get anything else done. It's just not, that's not the way it works. I'm being honest with you.
So I would say a revision is probably a misnomer. There were a couple of questions. The plans weren't being revised.
Well, but.
And so.
Mike, Mike, let, let, let's get this last comment out and then we'll, as I said before, I'll give Ms. Klein my information. You know, but go ahead and answer, go ahead and answer the question or provide the rest of the comment. I don't want you to, to get cut off.
So I. So I guess I would ask, I would ask you this.
Well, I don't want to get into a back.
No, I don't.
That's what I don't want to do.
But think about it.
Okay.
I'm here saying this was incredibly frustrating, incredibly painful, incredibly costly. And I think I mentioned, is staffing sufficient, given the volume? Is one person sufficient for the volume? And thank you for the offer to follow up.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Mr. Seligson.
Paul Seligson, four seven two seven Mill Hall Lane. But tonight I come to you as the president of the Business Association. About three and a half weeks ago, I wrote you a note about a really dangerous situation. On Newtown Street Road, which is two fifty two south. And that's from Mary Jane Lane to Cornerstone Drive. And if you can picture that, it's a really narrow stretch of road. And frequently one is seeing pedestrians coming down from where Gentili's and. The Gulf Gas Station is they're coming down towards Cornerstone, Pecah. Toronto, they're going that way. And they're using it as a way to get to work. So that's where the Business Association comes in because we do have members, Tech is one of them. Who have employees that use that as a way to get back and forth to work. And it's really, really dangerous and. I kind of explored on the right-hand side of the guardrail, there is a, a little bit of room for a sidewalk or a boardwalk or something. And the research that I've done, because this is a state road, it's PennDOT. And because it's PennDOT, PennDOT starts with the township making the request. And if the township were to make the request. I since have found the two folders from the state representative and our state senator. On both of these folders, it says, we will assist in PennDOT. Issues. So I called State Representative Barowski and I said, how would you assist in this? And they said, it starts with the township, but if. Once the ball gets, the application is received in Harrisburg. We'll put our shoulder to the wheel and we'll try to push it along as well as we'll look for grant writing and funding for it. And I would like to encourage you and urge you to start the ball rolling. I realize PennDOT can be a bureaucracy of. Gigantic proportions. But if we had a state senator and a state representative, both willing to put their shoulder to the wheel and see if they could. You know, find some way to make a sidewalk. You know, we're just looking at a situation where. A, a fatality or injury or something terrible. This could happen within the next five years. I, I haven't seen people walking down and back and forth. All the, all these many last fifteen years, I've only seen it in the last year and a half. I don't know. What, if it's the sep, the bus schedule or the sep, the where people get on and off the bus. I don't know what's changed, but something's changed. And I just urge you to think about it, start the ball rolling and, and then go to our state representatives and get them involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Tell you to, to look at the inquiry from last Sunday, there was a situation, same thing where up in Bristol. And it was a twelve-year project. So, and I met with our state representative on Friday about another issue. It's so. With regards to sidewalks, but. Something, the connectivity, connectivity. Is something that the board is working on and we actually have something that's really exciting in the works. And when it gets more concrete, I'll be, I know Ms. McIsaac has been informed of it by the township manager. As he responded to her via that, that letter. So. Any other public comment? Nope. All right, then I will make a motion. This meeting's adjourned.